Good morning. I would like to welcome everybody to the May 20th Albany County Commissioners Meeting. The first order of business is roll call and call to order. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, Commissioner Gozar, Commissioner Hoff, Commissioner Jones present. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is public hearing. We do not have one today. Item four, do I have any comments from the public, either online or in the room? Are there any comments from the public this morning? I have a hard time. I need a little taller chair. Okay, last time, any comments from the public, either online or in the room? Hearing none, we'll move on to disclosures.
I have none, Madam Chair.
I have none.
And I do not believe I have any. Item six, consideration of changes to the agenda.
Good morning, Madam Chair Commissioners. I would like to remove item number sixteen from this morning's agenda, please. We had a couple of changes. So we're going to make those more than just June 13th.
Thank you. Any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to item seven, approval of the consent agenda.
We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item eight of the regular agenda, discuss Rocky Mountain Blue Sky additional funding request for Albany County Search and Rescue Building. Really?
Good morning Commissioners. So as you may or may not remember at the last meeting, I brought this item before you. Rocky Mountain Power is asking that the county provide thirty percent. The county then also requests the thirty percent from the federal direct pay program, and then forty percent would be coming from Rocky Mountain Power. We did table the, or I didn't officially table it, we did put it on this meeting so Leo could be present. He is present online to answer all your questions. So you can go ahead and ask him those.
Okay. Any questions?
I guess my question is, where is this economically viable? And makes fiscal sense for the county, so that the panels and the batteries and everything are under warranty by the time it pays for itself?
Good morning Commissioners, thank you for having me. I'm in Lander today, so I'm joining online. I, I know Bailey had some questions, so she asked, or you told me that you had some questions, so she asked me to, to attend. I sent you a updated proposal via email. I don't know if you had a chance to review it. So just to reiterate what had been done, the original proposal to Rocky Mountain Power asked for a seventy percent match for them, so the county would be responsible for only thirty percent of the project cost. And Rocky Mountain Power came back and offered to cover forty percent via the grant and asked the county to, to, you know, cover, or to apply for the elective, federal elective pay incentive, which is, would cover another thirty percent, which would still give the county a seventy percent match to the grant, so the county would only be responsible for the remaining thirty percent, which I believe is around sixty-two thousand dollars. So, the, you're asking, Commissioners Hoff, you're asking me what the county would be responsible for and what the, the payback would be for that system? Is that your question as far as, you know?
Yeah, is it going to pay for itself within the twenty-year warranty of the panels, the batteries, and the entire system?
Yes, with the incentives, I believe that the, the payback in the proposal that we came up with was about twelve to fourteen-year payback. So as soon as a solar is metered directly to the grid, the bill for the county would be greatly reduced for that building. They would only be responsible for the interconnection fee, which I believe is around thirty dollars a month. Everything else, every, all the other usage would be offset by the solar. And the batteries do make that, that return on investment a little longer, because, you know, it adds to the expense of the project. So yes, the, the warranty is twenty-five years for the, for the panels. I believe it's fifteen years for the batteries. So yeah, if everything goes according to plan and you are awarded the, the grant and the funding from the federal direct pay, that system should pay for itself before the, the twenty-five-year life expectancy of the system.
That's if it's awarded. Sheriff, do you have, is this also going to be mounted at ground level, or is, are these going to be elevated? The original plan? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead Sheriff. Yeah, so the county requested that we do a ground mount, because they had some concerns about the roof on the, the building itself. The ground mount did increase the cost of the project, but yeah, they would be ground mounted to the north of the building where they would be fully exposed to the sun, with very little to no shade.
That plan hasn't changed.
That plan hasn't changed. Are you going to need that space to park anything, or?
We, we have a couple of different options on when we make the changes to abandon vehicles, but shouldn't get to, it shouldn't be in the way.
Okay, and you're okay with them getting installed down there?
Yes, that's actually where we prefer them.
Okay.
So Leo, Pete, Gozar, this estimated net savings of twenty-two thousand eight, eighty-six, that's the updated stuff that you sent us in their packet?
Uh, yeah, I believe so. I, I sent a link with the updated proposal here. Let me pull it up. So it looks like if you would receive the Blue Sky Grant and the federal direct pay at thirty percent, the net system cost would be sixty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars, and that's what the county would be responsible for. That's the remainder of the project. You know, the cost was, was a lot more than what it would be if it had been roof mounted. And of course, the batteries, you know, are a mandate by Rocky Mountain Power. You can also, you know, they, they do offer the, the option of signing up for their Wattsmart program, which they would pay the county for, you know, using some of the storage, the stored energy in their batteries. But that is something that the county will have to, to explore once the system is installed. So that would, that would also help your, your ROI, your return on investment. And I don't know if you're familiar with that program, but I, I can give you some more information if you'd like.
Sure, and, and what increase did you figure every year in electricity when you went to figure out ROI? Was it four percent? Was it three percent? What was the, the increase in energy, electricity costs that you guys figured into this?
Um, I do, yeah, I believe it is like a three or a four percent increase. You know, that's a, I think that's a national average. I'm not, I'm not quite sure how accurate that is, but, but I mean, that's, that sounds about right on par with other utilities. And the other, the other thing that should be mentioned is that the offset, the yearly offset for that building is above a hundred percent. I think it's at one sixteen, so one hundred and sixteen, based on the bills that you've provided for me, the energy that that building uses should be offset by a hundred and sixteen percent annually by the solar. So it's essentially zeroing out the bill. And that, and that's, that's based on the current bills, right? So if, if it does continue to, to increase at a three to four percent rate, you're still pretty good there for a while, right, with a hundred and sixteen percent being covered?
Yeah, electricity rates would say have gone up more than four percent in the last few years. Go up higher, your payback comes sooner, and your overall payback is larger. So if we get another fifty percent rate, or rate hike, or ten percent, this locks in your, your electricity rate essentially at the time you produce the solar panels, at the time you raise up, right, because you're no longer paying the vagaries of the electricity market.
Yes, once the system, the system has been commissioned and net metered into the grid. So, you know, I think that as far as the offset is good, right? I mean, it's going to zero out the bill. The ROI is a little higher because of the batteries, but you could help to, to, you know, offset that a little bit with the Wattsmart program, which is essentially Rocky Mountain Power paying the county to use some of the energy out of the batteries from time to time.
And then I guess my only other question is, what is the ongoing cost for this? Is there cleaning? Is there preventative maintenance? Is there inspection fees that need to be paid out over the course of the life of the product?
No, sir, you know, solar is pretty passive. Once it's installed, you don't really have to do much to it. If you want to clean it and get dust off, or bird droppings or something like that, I mean, it could be cleaned with a squeegee and water at ground level. I think that was one of the other factors as to why they wanted a ground mount, but, you know, everything is monitored online. If something were to go wrong with the system, we would provide a service, you know, to come and look at it and figure out what's wrong, but that's a nice thing about solar as opposed to wind, you know, there's not a lot of moving parts. So once it's up and operational, it, it should just, just be able to work. And if something does arise, you can find, you know, we can pinpoint the, the, what, what's wrong with it, just via monitoring, online monitoring, which the county will have access to that as, as well as us, or whoever, you know, would, would install the project.
I have no other questions.
I just have one, Terry Jones.
Yes ma'am.
In answering Commissioner Hoff's first questions, I noticed that you used the phrase "I believe" and "should", which is very squishy.
Okay.
And so, do you want to address that? Why do you use those instead of yes, it will, or no, it won't, or it will?
In terms to, 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 I guess, what are you referring?
To the questions that Commissioner Hoff asked at the beginning.
I believe she's referring to the, the RMP Blue Sky Match. Or is that?
Oh, the, yeah, the Rocky Mountain Power.
That, that's available. It's, it's the, the federal incentives that are
Yes.
possibility of dissolving.
Yeah, so, so here's what I can tell you. The, the federal direct pay is a thirty percent incentive, right? They would credit, they would pay the county thirty percent of the project cost. But as we all know, there, there's a lot of fluctuation right now within the, the federal government and, and spending and, and things they're doing. That incentive for commercial projects is set to be, the, the federal commercial ITC is what they call it. That is set to go through twenty thirty-two. And I'm, and I'm basing this information, we are members of a national solar cooperative called Amicus, and they do market research. And so what we're hearing from, from Amicus and some of the folks that have their ear to the ground there are that the, the federal incentive is set to stay at thirty percent through twenty twenty-eight, and then it will start to decrease slowly through thirty, or twenty thirty-two. Now, that is the federal incentive for businesses. The, the incentive for elective pay or direct pay is a little different because it's going to municipalities and nonprofits. And I can't, Commissioner, I just can't give you an answer as to what they're going to do if they decide to change that in some way. What I can tell you is that we do other grants for businesses in Wyoming, federal grants, REAP. It's the Rural Energy for America Program. And those REAP grants earlier this year, they had been frozen, and there were folks that had had projects installed who were waiting, you know, these grants are, they pay you after completion of the project, right? They reimburse you essentially. So those REAP grants have been frozen, and then I do know that some folks that use that REAP grant did receive their money. They unfroze the funds, gave them their money, and I know that there are other installations all over the country that are reliant, you know, in Rocky, in states where Rocky Mountain Power offers this grant. I know that they're reliant on those funds and they've already been installed. And so as far as I know right now, for elective pay, those installations will receive their money. I don't know what can happen in the coming months, but I know that there are some safeguards as far as the safe harbor provisions, which if you had a project like this, or any kind of construction project installed during the twenty twenty-five tax year, that those tax laws should carry forward, right? They should be applicable to projects that were installed this year. So as I said, I'm not sure if there, if changes will come, or if they won't, but if a project is installed this year and those laws are in place, I would assume that the county would have good, good footing to say, hey, we installed these projects. We applied for these incentives, and we believe that they should be awarded. So I hope that helps to bring some clarity into, I know you have questions. I know there's some uncertainty, but that's what I can tell you, and that's coming based on information from other industry professionals that we work with.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Leo? Thank you Leo. So at this point, I do need to know what direction you guys want to go, because I do need to get back to Rocky Mountain Power. So what's on the table right now is match thirty percent from the county, thirty percent for the direct pay, forty percent from Rocky Mountain Power. That does mean that the county is upfront sixty percent, and then thirty percent of that we can go ask for the direct pay for. What would you guys like to do?
I'd like to proceed with the opportunity at forty percent from Rocky Mountain Power. And yeah, I mean, it, it makes, thank you for clarifying Leo, does, does make, make sense as long as those programs aren't going to dissolve. And I guess if they do, then it's sixty thousand dollars and our repayment takes a little longer.
Okay.
So.
Alright, then that's what I'll, I'll reach out to them.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much Leo.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Item nine, present for approval, interest-bearing deposit agreement between the Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming, Archon Incorporated, and First Interstate Bank for Pilot Hill Trailhead Project. Bailey, what?
Bailey said I get to do it this morning. Okay, so this agreement Commissioners is statute allows that when we have a retainage on a construction project, that the contractor can set up an interest-bearing account at the bank. There's an agreement with the bank that we have a copy of that says, we put money in, the bank can release the interest to the contractor, but not the principal until we've completed all of our statutory obligations for final payment and closing the contract. So this is that agreement for the Pilot Hill Trailhead Project.
I move that we approve the interest-bearing account between the Board of County Commissioners of Albany County, and Archon Inc., and First Interstate Bank for the Pilot Hill Trailhead Project.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item ten, award the bid for the purpose of completing the National Register of Historic Places district nomination for the Lincoln Monument for Albany County Historic Preservation Board to Post Oak Preservation Solutions LLC.
The Lincoln Monument project did go out for bid. We did only receive one bid back from that. The Historic Preservation Board met last week. They would like to move forward with this bid. We just need you guys to award it as well, and then the contract will be on the June third meeting.
Madam Chair, I move that we award the bid for the, item ten as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item eleven, present for approval, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one zero, resolution and proclamation creating the Albany County Semi-Quintennial Committee.
You know, I put that on there just to make sure.
I know, and I'm getting, I'm getting better at it.
Well, you know, by the end of all this, you're going to be a pro. Like we discussed at the last meeting, you guys would like to move forward with having that Albany County Historic Preservation Board as that committee. This is just the proclamation resolution for that.
I approve that we, I, I move that we approve the resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one zero, resolution proclaiming, or proclamation creating the Albany County Semi-Quintennial Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item twelve, present for approval, approach license for Steve Alred Slade Rain and/or Cheyenne Home Services on County Road Forty-four, Harmony Lane, located in Section thirteen Township, fourteen North, Range Seventy-six West. Good morning Rob.
This is a, for a, a, approach to a site where I think they're doing some, adding a building or something like easier access to Harmony. It makes sense, looks good, so.
I move that we approve the approach license for Steve Alred Slade Rain and/or Cheyenne Home Services on County Road Forty-four as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you Rob. Item thirteen, present for approval, utility license for Carbon Power and Light Incorporated on County Road Fifty-one, Two Rivers Road, three point nine miles from Highway Thirty.
So we've been getting a lot of development on Two Rivers Road now. People looking for sites outside of, outside of city limits and basically we need to get electricity to them, so that's basically what this is.
Any issues?
No.
Okay. I move that we approve the utility license for Carbon County and Carbon Power Light on County Road Fifty-one, Two Rivers Road, three point two miles from Highway Thirty.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item fourteen, present for consideration, the right-of-way utility agreement between Travis James, doing business as Medicine Boat Cabin LLC, and the Board of Commissioners of Albany County. Morning David.
Morning Chair Commissioners. We received a request from Travis James to cross an alley plotted in the Centennial subdivision. This, basically, they would like to put their septic tank on one property and their leach field on the other, due to topography on the one side. So they're basically going to run the, the pipe from the tank to the leach field under the, the alley there. The alley is, is a platted public right-of-way, that's why we're, this is required to come to you. The properties to the north and the south of the alley are both under the same ownership. The properties are not within the water and sewer district. And then the design of a conventional gravity wastewater system can't be installed south of the alley due to the increase in elevation that exists on the property to the south. And then there's no current use of the surface of the alley right-of-way. So we've done these with public utilities before, but this is different because it's a private owner that's running a pipe under there. So they did say that it will be marked so that you can
Locate it.
Locate it. And, but it will be going through our right-of-way, so we're presenting this to you. If you would like to approve it, the grant was written up by the County Attorney's Office that's been signed. You guys just have to sign it if you're, you want to do that. If not, then we will fill the applicants.
So David, I got a, a few questions. How deep underneath that alley, so if we for some reason had to improve that alley in the future, we wouldn't be digging up any sewer pipe? Do you know that's the depth underneath that alley?
Uh, probably a few feet. I don't know the exact depth. But it can't be super deep. I mean, probably between three and four feet, I'd imagine, to get to where they need to be. But I don't know that for sure, so I mean.
But if we had a bad winter, I think that could freeze, especially if people are driving over the top of it.
Typically, if you have you know, two to three feet of, of ground, you're good. And we can require them to put some of that blue board over it. That also helps to insulate it. And we do that a lot from when it comes out of the house. Sometimes it's only like a foot or so, foot or two, so they had to put that on that and I guess it works, but.
Never had an issue, and ours isn't that deep, so.
I was going to say, from like a county responsibility standpoint, so long as the septic is installed according to septic standards, if they don't bury it deep enough so that it freezes, that's their problem. There is a chance in the future that the alley could be developed. It's north in Centennial, and this gentleman owns both sides of the property. So we had discussed when this first came up that they could apply for a vacation of that alley so that then their property was connected all as one. They haven't done that at this point, but could in the future.
That, that was my question, is what happens if they go to sell the property, then they've got, that's, that's another issue to parse.
It would be their issue, not ours. Hey, in all honesty.
Okay, and then David, there's a house to the west, fifty-nine there on the map.
Okay.
It says that that leach field is fifty feet from the, from the property boundary. But it has to be a hundred feet from that well of that private property fifty-nine there. Do we know where the water well is on that property?
The one to the west?
Yeah.
Maybe I would have to look at the application, but that, that is a requirement. So that will be reviewed as part of the, the wastewater application. They need this before we can do the formal review and, and give them permission.
Okay, so we're not giving them a formal?
You're not approving anything but the access across the alley today, so then you're not improving the wastewater application.
Okay, okay. Well, would you check that out for me? Because I, from the map, I did not see if that water well is near that house somewhere, which I suspect most people's water well is. It's hard to think that it would be a hundred feet away, but maybe it is, I don't know.
I'll, I'll talk with Lisa and we'll make sure that that's the case.
Commissioners?
I don't see any reason, I mean, as long as they take appropriate measures to have, be able to locate on, while it's on public access. I, I'm assuming a locate wire is sufficient, and then if they want to put some kind of steel, anything above it to lessen the impact, I don't know if they're going to put a cul, through a culvert or some kind of ducting, but I, that's not the county's issue. That would simply be preventative.
Right.
So, okay, well, I.
I move that we consider the right-of-way utility agreement between Travis James, doing business as Medicine Boat Cabin LLC, and the Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany. And Kayla, do we need something more than I move to consider? Or do you need to approve the consideration?
Probably approve the agreement.
Well, that's what, that is the utility agreement. That's the name of the agreement, so.
Okay.
I think you, if you move to approve it.
Okay, I move to approve the right-of-way utility agreement as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item fifteen, present for approval, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one one, a resolution adopting the Wyoming Region Three Hazard Mitigation Plan twenty twenty-five update. Kate, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. The Wyoming Region Three Hazard Mitigation Plan has been updated by our office in cooperation with Albany County, the City of Laramie, the Town of Rock River, Albany County Fire District One, Laramie Rivers Conservation District, Albany County School District, Albany County Hospital District, Old Improvement District, and the Pioneer Lake Huddy Irrigation District, and the Wyoming Office of Homeland Security, under FEMA guidelines. We started working with a contractor almost a year ago to get this completed, and it is now, excuse me, sorry. The plan is now complete, and we are requesting the adoption of the plan by the Albany County Commissioners through a resolution.
It's a thick document.
It is a thick document. Had a lot of reviews.
I, I, yeah, I, there was a lot of time and effort that went into it.
There sure was.
I don't have any questions. I move that we approve the resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero eleven. Resolution adopting the Wyoming Region Three Hazard Mitigation Plan twenty twenty-five update. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item sixteen was removed from the agenda this morning, thank you, Kate. Item seventeen, present for approval, Amendment One to the Treatment Court Funding Contract. Between Wyoming Judicial Branch and Albany County Board of Commissioners. For the Albany County Integrated Juvenile Drug Treatment Program in the amount of two hundred thousand. Two hundred six, two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, six hundred. Two and eight cents from July first twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth twenty twenty-six.
Well, hi, hello, Commissioners, good morning. This is an amendment to just our contract with the state. It used to be required that any treatment provider was CARF certified, which is a federal substance abuse certification. With our change to the judicial branch last year, they've been making some amendments to our contract. And this is a simple one, they just want to remove the CARF certification.
Heather, were they gonna replace it with anything else, or?
There have already been required to be state certified, and that will remain. They're just removing that, the federal one. The federal one was a little over seven thousand dollars every two years. And that was something that the state paid. And then it became a hindrance for smaller communities that didn't have the ability. Or smaller treatment centers that didn't have that money or the ability to get CARF certified. And so they just made it across the board, that program's won't have to be.
And so that those, those certifications, that accreditation is still similar, just not getting the CARF.
Correct, they still, the state still comes, they have the certifications, the training. Make sure everybody's compliant, there are treatment providers that aren't state certified, we would not use those contracts that require state certification.
I guess I'm still a little confused why there's a dollar amount attached to it, if we're just changing, amending the language.
I left the dollar amount there when I did the cover sheet.
I'm looking at it going five hundred thousand, almost six hundred thousand dollars.
Because, I mean, honestly, it makes it easier for us when we have to, when I have to tell Kayla to go back and look for something, if there's a dollar amount.
You can, you can search the dollar, okay.
Searchability.
So that, that's why we left the dollar.
Okay, I, because I wouldn't sure whether we're, we're amending the dollar amount, or, okay, we're doing a contract, okay.
I didn't know either.
Okay, I, I'm sitting here doing math, and thanks, you got me doing homework at ten o'clock at night. Not at ten o'clock at night. I move we approve the Amendment One to Treatment Court Funding Contract. Between Wyoming Judicial Branch and Albany County Board of County Commissioners. For the Albany County Integrated Juvenile Drug Treatment Program in the amount of two hundred thousand. Six hundred two dollars and eight cents per July first twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth twenty twenty-six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you, Heather. Item eighteen, present for approval, Amendment One to the Treatment Court Funding Contract. Between Wyoming Judicial Branch and Albany County Board of Commissioners. For the Albany County Supervised Treatment Program in the amount of three hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And eight cents from July first twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth twenty twenty-six.
And this is the adult contract, so the exact same thing, just removing the CARF certification from our contract. For our adult program.
I move that we approve Amendment One to Treatment Court Funding Contract. In Wyoming Judicial Branch and the Albany County Board of Commissioners for the Albany County Supervised Treatment Program. In the amount of three hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eight cents. From July first twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth twenty twenty-six. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item nineteen, present for approval, request or proposal for treatment services. For Albany County Court Supervised Treatment Program Participants and direct the clerk to advertise.
Hi, Commissioners, our current treatment contract is up at the end of June. And so we are asking to put out the request for proposal to recruit treatment providers. For our next round of treatment. For our adult program, to clarify, our juvenile contract is good for another year.
Kate, you're just missing the letter or the word two in one of these, two dot two dot one. County reserves the right to terminate any agreement, that's all I got.
Thank you.
I figured it was cutting patients somewhere else.
Hundred percent.
Heather, can they separate out, separate out, can a person do the individual work and some other group do the group work? Or is there, is there those separations available or not?
No, preferences is that one treatment provider provide, provide all of the services. So that the quality of treatment is consistent and that we have. Specific representatives from the treatment center that are on our team. We could have obviously multiple people on our team, it just makes things a little more confusing. So really, the standard of quality for treatment is the big goal.
Do you feel like you'll get people to apply for this? I know in the past, sometimes you've had some struggles.
Yes, I do think we will get some applications. Once the RFP is proposed, I will go through the state certified list and notify everybody that it's out there. And there's only a handful of places here in town, but I do think we will receive some bids.
Thank you. Okay, I move that we approve the request for proposal for treatment services for Albany County. Court Supervised Treatment Program Participants and direct the clerk to advertise. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much, Heather. Present for approval, contract between Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming. And Wayne Scott Consulting LLC for grant writing services through June thirtieth twenty twenty-six.
The past few years, we have contracted with a grant writer to do our twenty twenty-five page narratives. For those big federal grants that require them, majority of the grants that we do apply for, they don't require those. But having that extra writing help is helpful to our office. Writing is not my expertise, I will admit that, I am more of the numbers person, I'm not the management person. But it is nice to have somebody to be able to. Write those for us to make it a stronger application, so that's why I'm hoping we can contract with Wayne Scott Consulting.
And this was the only one that was just a hourly?
Correct, the other things I got were. They had like more services provided, they were a lot more complicated, I didn't, wasn't really a fan of them, but. And this was very reasonable.
Yeah.
To be perfectly honest, we have contracted with Wayne Scott Consulting in the past, her rates have gone up, but so has everything in this one, so. At this rate, I still feel like it is very reasonable, and it shouldn't take a lot out of our budget.
Is that a, is it, poor Collins, Greeley?
She's at a Greeley, yes. And we see her face to face with me each year.
Okay.
She has family up here.
And you've had, obviously, good results, because you're.
Yeah, I mean, she's been very successful, I mean, there's still one project I can't get over the hump with DOT. But I'm still trying on that one, but I mean, other than that, I mean, she's, she is very good at the. Mental health, the drug, the drug court thing, she's very, very good at that. And we're still working on, you know, more of our infrastructure things, but we'll get there.
And I've had time working with her on various things in our strategic plan, she was there, she's a wonderful person, she's great. I move we approve the contract between the Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming. And Wayne Scott Consulting LLC for grant writing services through June thirtieth twenty twenty-six. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item twenty-one, discuss and take action if necessary on the Public Defender's Office Request for Stipend. Pursuant to Wyoming Statute seven dash six dash one one one.
Good morning, Commissioners.
This is Patty Bennett, she is the supervisor of the Public Defender Office here in town. As you know, we had all the issues with the annex, and the public defenders have moved into a different building down on Second Street. And statute was in your pocket and requires that we either provide office space or stipend. So Patty is here this morning to request a stipend and to have a discussion with you about the amount. That she would like to request and answer any questions that she might.
Thank you, good morning. In the, I guess, infinite wisdom of our legislature, they've said you have to do this stipend. But there's no guidance whatsoever in the statute as to what that should look like. I did some informal research, we do have a few offices around the state that also are in private buildings. And they do it a little bit different, there's really no, I guess, standard thing that we ask for. I know Fremont County does a, an amount per attorney. Which seems a bit more complicated than it needs to be, I believe Park County has a set amount. We do have a lease with a, a building where at four twelve South Second Street, which is the Holly, the Holly Hawk Building is where we are. We are in a lease in that building through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-nine. And the rent in that building does increase every year. I did some kind of informal math and.
What is the rate increase, anyone?
So. The percentage wise, I'd have to actually do that, but we're at sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars right now. Through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, that's an annual amount. July first of twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth twenty twenty-six, it goes up to seventy thousand, nineteen dollars.
I'm sorry, repeat that number.
Seventy thousand, nineteen, and then there's a rate increase every year. The final year, July first through twenty, twenty twenty-eight through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-nine. It goes up to seventy-six thousand, five eleven, sixty-five.
How much square footage are you guys occupying?
It's a big, it's a big space, it's the entire. Yeah, it's, it's a lot more than I wanted to ask the state of Wyoming to pay for. But at the time, we were in some pretty dire straits. We were, I had three attorneys working out of the fourth conference room here, so it was pretty much the only thing that was available. It could be available to house the attorneys. Now, we have four attorneys, so the, the annex building would not have a space for each attorney. So, and I think the Guardian Edelena is in there now, or she was. So that space really isn't feasible right now, but yes, it is certainly a lot more money than. We wanted to pay.
Right, yeah, is it the whole second floor of that building?
It's the first floor.
Oh, you've got the whole first floor?
We do, most of it, it doesn't go all the way back to the alley, there is a portion between the, between the alley. That is unfinished still, but it is a, it's a good, it's a good amount of space.
So what's the total square foot footage that you need?
It's not necessarily a square footage amount that we need. I need four offices, we have four attorneys, and I need a space for two legal assistants.
That's gotta be like six thousand square feet? Five thousand?
I could, I have the lease here, I can dig through it, but I believe it's about five, is what we were talking. You know, I don't know if anybody's ever really presented these numbers to you, I, I had my office in Cheyenne. Run the numbers of just the number of people that we serve in the county, because I thought that might be of interest to you. Fiscal year twenty twenty-four, we handle one hundred and seventy felony cases. Four hundred and forty-four misdemeanor cases and twenty-two juveniles, six hundred and thirty-seven cases. There would be an additional, it usually runs roughly thirty percent more than that number. Because that would include subcases, subcases are if someone has a criminal charge. And then there are additional charges or additional cases that happens with that person. Usually runs that number up by about thirty percent. So far, for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, beginning July first twenty twenty-four. We're up to one hundred and fourteen felonies, two hundred and twenty-two misdemeanors, and three hundred and forty total. So we have four juvenile cases so far this fiscal year. So there is a, a need, there's a, you know, we do serve a, a large number of people in, in the county. But I thought that would be an interesting number for you to know, you know, what we do and, and how many we serve. Kind of based on what I've looked at other counties doing, what other, and this information did not come from the counties themselves. It came from other public defender offices, just so you know. I'm asking the commissioners to approve a stipend of fifteen hundred dollars per month. That is, I think right now it would be roughly twenty-six percent. By the time we're at the end of the lease, it'd be about twenty-three percent of the rent. And I just flipped over the front page of the lease, Commissioner, that is three thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven square feet.
Three thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven square?
Yes, sir.
This just, this just helps with office space requirements too, just?
Absolutely, no, I understand.
Could you repeat that, three thousand what?
Three thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven is what is on the.
I haven't been in that building since they refinished it, I saw it when it was bare.
Come by, I'd be happy to give you a tour.
I will, I'll take you up on that.
It is, it's really nice, they did a great job with it, like I said, there's a back section that's still unfinished. And I know that they finished the top floor, and I believe they're doing, I don't know, apartments or Airbnb or something up there.
Everybody else.
Yeah.
No, I think that's a perfectly reasonable number.
Thank you.
I mean, based on the previous space that you were in. And, I mean, the market rate here in town is all over the place, so I don't know how you'd ever get a common consensus on what square footage runs. So.
And we, we did struggle, we looked quite a bit when we were using that conference room upstairs. And there really just wasn't a lot that was available that would house the number of people I needed to house.
Sorry, I'm just looking at the property details.
Can I ask a question? Would this go into effect at the first of the fiscal year, or would you like your first payment, I guess, when the first payment be, just number wise, so I know?
And that would be, I guess, I would leave that to the commissioners, we've been in that building about a year. It's taken a while to, to come before you, and that's largely my fault, but. We're in May, so I don't think it would be unreasonable to start with the fiscal year, that would be about another month and a half. I think that would be an unreasonable thing to do.
To know when to budget it and where to budget it.
Yeah.
And then Patty, do you have storage requirements, files, and that type of stuff?
We do, I mean, obviously, right now we have plenty of room for that, but we do have filing cabinets, we house. Our current files are kept by the attorneys in their offices, but we house every year, we keep our closed files. And those actually go to the Wyoming State Archives, we archive once a year. So we start out with nothing at the beginning of the, of the year, at, by the end of the year, we're, we have quite a bit. We also house the closed files for Carbon County. We are a joint office, so I supervise this office, I also supervise the Carbon County office. So those closed files come to Laramie. And then my legal assistant in Laramie actually does the archiving process, and then we take all of those over to Cheyenne.
And the, the reason I ask, and maybe Taylor or maybe you know, have we reached out to the public defenders and see what they might require if we were to. At some point, get a new facility, additional facility for the county to put them in there?
We did not ask the public defenders, we, I certainly can, but.
Our ultimate thought was because they are court-related, they would, there would be space in the courthouse.
Okay.
That's, that was a discussion we had had, but we have not.
Oh.
I only asked county departments.
Okay, okay, no, but that makes sense if they're coming.
Yeah, yeah. And in Carbon County, when they did their courthouse refurbish a few years ago, they did, we do have space in the courthouse in Carbon County. Either we use for our turn, one where.
I mean, ideally, that would be.
That would be ideal, yes, sir.
Makes it a lot.
And that's what we're hoping for when, when we. And that's what we're hoping for when, when we get there with the county. Um, it's, it just makes sense to have us all.
A little delayed now. Legislature.
With it, and and it's, and I would talk to you on this current also, it's like, gosh, with a twenty-five percent, uh, property tax cut, it's really difficult to come before you and ask for money. I, and we are certainly mindful of that.
I move we, uh, approve a fifteen hundred dollar stipend to the public defender's office. So to Wyoming State Statute seven dash six dash one one.
I'll second.
My second, or my third, yeah. Motion carries.
Thank you. And just so that I, uh, when I report that to my boss, um, did you want that to begin at the, uh, beginning of the fiscal year?
July one.
Yeah. That's what I would, yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item twenty-two, present for approval, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one-two, vacating that portion. Of the eighteen ninety Flumbeagle Road and Seveely Road right of way, which spans section one, two, ten and eleven. Of township nineteen. North, range seventy-two, west of the sixth prime meridian. Sections twenty-five and thirty-six of township twenty, north range seventy-two. West of the sixth prime meridian, section seventeen, nineteen, twenty, thirty and thirty-one of township. Twenty north, range seventy-one, west of the sixth prime parin, parin. And sections one, two, ten, eleven, fifteen, sixteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Thirty-one and thirty-two of township nineteen, north range seventy-three, west of the sixth prime meridian. And sections one, two, ten, eleven, fifteen, sixteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Thirty-one and thirty-two of township nineteen, north range seventy-three, west of the sixth prime meridian. All of which are located in Albany County, Wyoming and direct clerk to report the same. Jennifer.
I apologize for the mouthful. This is the resolution that will finally vacate those portions of that easement that we had discussed previously. The thirty day time for objections passed and no objections were received by the clerk's office. And this will be the only document that we need to sign today. A lot of times when we do vacations, we do the resolution and then a quick claim or something. We don't need that here because the land just reverts back to the already recorded landholders underneath it.
I I move that we approve the resolution twenty twenty-five zero one-two as presented and direct the clerk to record the same.
Second, I do have a, uh, I think in the, whereas and also in what Terry read. There's just a repeat of the sections one, two, ten, eleven, fifteen, sixteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-one, thirty-two of township nineteen, north range seventy-three, west of the sixth prime meridian.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, so it also appears in the resolution.
Okay. Well, I would, because I probably copy paste.
Yeah.
Cause I wasn't.
Thank you, because as I was reading that, I'm like, I just read this.
I will fix that.
I thought it was a different range.
I was gonna say.
It's range seventy-one, range seventy-two and range seventy-three. Oh, no, there is. Okay, I see where you get. Okay. Yeah, there's an extra seventy-three.
There is an extra.
Okay, alright.
Thank you. I'll fix it right.
And second then.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, uh, yeah.
Um, motion care, aye, motion carries. Uh, item twenty-three, make appointments to the Albany County Historic Preservation Board.
I move that we appoint Mary Beth Brown, uh, to the Albany County Preservation Board, uh, and this appointment would, uh, expire in April, twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item twenty-four. Executive session pursuant to Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A triple I and X I I.
I move that we go into executive session under Wyoming statute at. Ten twenty-five this morning.
All those in favor?
Could you give us those?
Okay, the Wyoming statute, uh, uh, sixteen dash four dash four oh five A subsection three and seven.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Oh, is it twelve? It is twelve. Okay.
Second.
Let's go in favor.
Aye.
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 Motion carries multiples of numbers today.
Multiples of numbers.
The hardest one was that two hundred thousand and then you.
I know, and I'm like, it can't be that bad. And then I read it back. I'm like, oh yeah, I'm making this sound right. It's just terrible.
Sounds like, oh, I read that because it doesn't, it's not coming out right.
There should be a common.